Let's go board to order. All members are in attendance. Please stand and join me to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
We'll begin with recognition of students, staff, and public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward. I will, would like to note that some of our civics classes at Jefferson, I believe, have a requirement that you attend, that students attend a public meeting. And it appears that we have some students in the audience. So if you would like to, not if you would like to, please step up to the podium and just tell us your name and what class you're in. Thank you.
My name is Ellie Arpin, and I am from Mr. Sterling's class at Thomas Jefferson High School. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Simkins. I am also in Dan Sterling's class.
Thank you. And now we have video proof that you were here, so if Mr. Sterling has any questions. I neglected to ask for a vote on the approval of the agenda. Would someone, all in favor, we haven't had a meeting in a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
All in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll move to Part A. And Part A includes our board business, field trip approvals, grants, contracts, and agreements, of which there are many this time, and our finances. Would someone like to move Part A?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Brings us right to Part B. First up is the proposed 2015 payable 2016 property tax levy.
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the school board of independent school district 271 approves the property tax levy for the proposed 2015 payable 2016 levy of $50,215,646. Be it further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of the school board of independent school district 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law. The state requires that districts use the term maximum on the certification sheet to allow these corrections to the levy.
Second.
Thank you. Our Director of Finance, Rad Zikovich, is here to, do you have a few words?
Chair Barlata, Superintendent of Fujitaki Board Members. This is the start of the process for the 1617 budget process. The first part is our preliminary levy. So the objective of this presentation is to prepare the board to make an informed decision tonight on the preliminary levy. The board will need to approve that action tonight. The two areas that I'll be reviewing in my presentation are the truth in taxation process and then the preliminary pay 2016 levy information. The truth in taxation process is a process that after the approval tonight, the district will send the information to the counties. The counties takes that information and becomes the, prepares the property tax statement that goes out to voters. That's sent out to voters in November. Then the voters have a chance at our December 14th meeting to give comment about where our property taxes are for the next year. After that meeting, or at that meeting, the board then certifies the actual levy for the next year. And then those numbers are used for providing the actual tax bills for the following year. So on September 7th, the state released preliminary preparation data to the district. Tonight, the board will certify a preliminary levy. We need to submit that by October 1st to the counties, both Hennepin and Scott. And I think a lot of times, I just like bringing this up every year, is a lot of people have questions why it's Hennepin and Scott. There's a small portion in our southwest area that is in Scott County. The counties prepare the truth in taxation notices in November, which we just talked about. And then December 14th is when the board approves the final submission. The two times of decisions from the board are tonight's meeting and then also the December 14th meeting. If we go into the actual information, the process is the MDE calculates preliminary levy amounts based on state statute and also district information. District information would be enrollment, would be our lease levy numbers, items such as that. There are five major categories within the levy. You have referendum, referendum other, which is mostly called equity, community services levy, our debt service, bonds and principal, interest payments, and then all other, like our capital projects levy, our old facilities, and those different other levies. As was mentioned in the resolution, the school board determines whether to levy the maximum or amount less than the maximum. Just remembering that whatever they, we levy tonight, we cannot go above it in the December meeting. So if we look at the referendum, the referendum, the voter-approved authority was a hundred, or $1,119 last year. There was a $9 inflationary increase. Our pupil units increased slightly. So we went from a $12.3 million up to a $12.5 million in that levy. If you look at the overall referendum levy, you can see that $2 million increase between the two years. But then you see adjustments, and prior year adjustments are basically the issue of that since we are making these decisions a year and a half from the point of the actual enrollment, the state recalculates these on a periodic basis and makes adjustments back to prior years. So if you look at last year, we were showing a positive adjustment of $409,000. This year, we're showing a negative adjustment of $97,000. So the net effect of that is a $506,000 adjustment. With the $208,000 increase in the inflationary and a slight increase in enrollment, we show our net levy going down in the referendum area of just under $300,000. The next refer, next area is referendum other, equity. Basically, the, some of the change here is all due to our enrollment changes. So you have your equity referendum, or your equity revenue. Your board approved, the board approved a few years ago, $300 of our referendum is not voter-approved, and that goes through 1819. Location equity, which is based on where we are in the suburban area, 424. And then again, prior year adjustments. So the overall is $229,000 difference, or 2.5% increase. Our next area is community services. Not a real significant change in this area. It's more of, we had a slight change in the community services, the basic revenue, prior year adjustments, so the overall of $55,000 adjustment. Our debt service, if we look at our debt service, the decline in debt service is mainly due to a change in legislation where the, the state changed how we account for all facility pays you go and also all facility bonding. And what they've done is they take, they've taken the state aid allocation that we, we have received in the past, where it used to be a mix between all facility and debt service. They moved it all to debt service, which was at about an additional $500,000 that they moved into this area, which is kind of offset on the other end with the other costs itself. So you look at prior year adjustments, again, this is part of where this legislature makes us levy 105% of what our bond, principal, and interest is. And then they come back after a couple of years and reconcile it to get us back to that level. So the overall, the debt service area is going down $416,000, or 3.9%. The last area, other, includes the areas, like I mentioned, our lease levy, our all facilities, our capital projects levy, which is technology and security, showing that going up 1.1 million. But as I mentioned before, about 600,000 of that is just a shift between debt service and this area. So if you look at our overall levy, last year, we had a levy of $49,551. This year, it's $50,220, or $668, or $69,000 increase, or 1.3%. When we renewed and increased our capital projects levy, we made a promise to the voters that our operating, non-operational levy would be held flat through the 1718 school year. So basically, as you see here, the, our promise is being kept with the $20,116, the $20,125. And then you can kind of see the, pretty much the operating referendum area. Because of some of the adjustments, we're pretty much flat between years. And then the other area is a slight increase. So overall, we're showing a 1.3% increase in our levy. If you look at what, as we work with the city and county on an annual basis, we try to look at median value homes. If you compare between the two years, you show, shows that the difference between a home is $12,800, or 6.2% increase in value. The county, city, and school taxes combined increased $87, or 3.1%. School district taxes went from $887 on a medium to $880, or down $7, or 0.8%. And here are just the different costs between, with the county, the city, and the district. So next steps, looking for board action, is to certify the preliminary levy tonight. Any changes between now and October 1st? The district state, the calculation that we're going to do the maximum, which protects us in case there were some calculations that weren't being done right, or some information that wasn't being sent through correctly to the state. Final limitations on the 14th, along with a right-to-know truth in taxation hearing, that we need to give the voters or the residents of the district opportunity to talk about the levy. Questions?
Could you go to, I think it's 18 or something like that? Yeah, so can you just speak to that briefly and sort of say how, if, if we're getting a 1.3% increase, how the property tax actually went down on a median family home? Because it looks like, and hopefully I'm right here. So in 2015, a median house that was valued $207,000 would pay $887. And right now, 2016, a house that was $219 is only paying $880? So technically, if your house is still only 206, you'd be paying 860, 870, something like that?
Correct.
So the property taxes, even though, so how does that work? Is it because we're asking for more, but since there's less students, or however it's calculated, we actually end up with less?
The reason why the change is, is that the overall value of both homes and also businesses has increased. So what, what we're saying is that your value of your home went up six, an average home went up 6.2%, where we only increased our levy 1.3%. So since it's, it's, their value is growing on the home, more of how they allocate it over the total property value of all the property values, since that growth is larger than what we're increasing, then the actual homeowner that has a priced home that's staying at the medium isn't paying as much if they were the same homeowner that had it at the medium the prior year.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have an income contract for high school concurrent enrollment programming at Kennedy High School. Someone like to move that resolution?
So moved.
Want to read it?
Oh, we got to read it, yeah. Be resolved that the school board of independent school district 271 approves an income contract between the Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities on behalf of Normandale Community College and Independent School District 271 for Kennedy High School for the high school concurrent enrollment program effective for the 2015-16 school year.
Second. Thank you. And our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby and Assistant Principal Chris Krenz from Kennedy are here to talk about it.
Thank you, Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. You got the background, but just for the public, the Department of Ed identified Kennedy as one of schools that is eligible for early college initiative program. One of the opportunities that has been afforded to them is to create concurrent enrollment courses with Normandale Community College. So the income contract included in your packet for approval here includes four concurrent enrollment courses, Modern Literature, College Algebra and Probability, Precalculus, and Guitar I. Student tuition is financed in the same manner as PSEO, college in the schools, and administration recommends the, the contract. I have Assistant Principal Krenz with me in case you have specific questions about the program. She's got deep knowledge of the program at Kennedy, so.
Do I understand, will they be, the courses be at Kennedy?
Yep. So our teachers can be credentialed as college professors. And so they both earn high school credit and college credit in those classes.
Is this a waiver of some kind for the regular federation or something like that, for the teachers to do that? Or is there certain credits that they have to take to do this?
So you have to be appropriately credentialed. So you have to have your master's in field, not in pedagogy, and/or in pedagogy with 16 credits towards your master's in field for Normandale to consider you as a professor. So then you go through the application process. If Normandale grants your professorship, then you can do some PD with that department over at the college and align the standards, align some of the materials that they use. And then as long as there's alignment and that professional development happens, then our teachers become professors and they can give college credit to our students by taking the college, by taking the college class at Kennedy.
And so then that's effective for the 2015-2016 school year? And it'll be semesters, just like our regular classes are?
Yeah, so we're on trimesters. So two of the courses, they take the average grade for the three trimesters to give the students the semester credit at Normandale. Guitar is a one trimester class, and it's worth one credit at Normandale. So that one trimester will give the students one credit. In the Modern World Lit class, they actually are doing the Normandale side of the class, third trimester. So their third trimester grade will be equivalent to what they get for their Modern Lit credit at Normandale. And we've had three of these classes. This will be our second year in them. Guitar is a new class. We just started that one now this year.
And does, is this a, a good marketing tool to draw others into Kennedy's program?
Absolutely.
Even Jefferson, and you know, some other ones around the, the area?
Yeah, I think, you know, the push now is to have students start earning early college credit. And technically now, ninth graders, if they're in a guitar class, 10th graders in the Modern World Lit class are earning college credit. And they're starting to earn college credit prior to even, you know, entering college. So it's a huge benefit to our school and to students in our, in our district.
Great, thank you.
Just, just a quick one, I think you've pretty much answered it, Chris. Can any student take, I mean, any ninth grader, as long as they've had the, the classes that come before it?
Right, so yep, they'll have to meet the prerequisites of the class, so they can take the class. And it's actually, the students have to take the Accuplacer exam, which is the exam that admits students into Normandale Community College. And there are standards they have to meet on that exam. If they don't meet the standards on the exam, there's also a waiver process where the teacher can say, this student is doing college-level work. We will grant them the college credit. So pretty much, if the students are working hard, doing well in the class, they have the potential to earn the credit. And then it's ultimately up to the student, though, to determine if they want that credit. If the student has a D in their Modern World Lit class, okay, that'll be on their Kennedy transcript, but do they really want that on their Normandale transcript? So we've had, you know, last year in our Precalculus class, we had a couple of students who said, nope, don't put that on my college transcript yet. But a majority of the students in all those classes earn the college credit, and that's now on their Normandale transcript.
Great, great, thank you.
Just have a quick question. Just want to say, you know, what a great opportunity our students have to be able to take this, this step. I have a question, I've been meaning to ask this for the last few days, regarding the, the requirement that the Higher Learning Commission seems to be kind of imposing on, on school districts. I just wanted to ask about that, you know, how, can, can you tell the rest of the board a little bit about that and what's going on, and how that would affect our school district, if it affects us at all? And, you know, what is the thought around that, please?
Right. Well, we do have college in the schools with our Japanese program. And so the credentialing for that is a little bit different, which the Office of Higher Learning Commission is now changing a little bit of the requirements. For the concurrent enrollment classes, though, pretty much the standards are staying the same. So the teachers we have teaching those classes still meet those standards. I met with Rob Lowe from Normandale just last Friday. And part of the reason for that is there were some schools that were, you know, in smaller towns in Minnesota that were giving concurrent enrollment credit to students through a college. And technically, their teachers weren't quite qualified and didn't meet the standards of what in the Higher Learning Commission has asked. But in our building, all of those teachers who are teaching those classes meet those standards, and there will be no, no issues with it.
So they all hold a master's degree in the same field?
Yeah, so it's language arts in math or in music for the guitar class.
Mm-hmm, great, okay. Thank you.
Something that Jefferson has as well, or is this unique to Kennedy?
It's unique to Kennedy. Jefferson has the opportunity, if they have the staff that have the credentials, and then staff, if the staff would want to do that. Because it does take time. You have to fill out the application to become a professor and then do the professional development, which is typically happens over the summer with Normandale. But currently, just Kennedy has these classes. The Bloomington Career and College Academy will have concurrent enrollment classes, though, as well. But in the high school itself, Kennedy is the only one that has it.
Do we know if our, any districts surrounding us are, have the same situation, or?
Yeah, there are a few other high schools in the area, not, I mean, kind of hit or miss. I think like Mounds View, White Bear Lake, there's other schools that do it. I think we have quite a few. I think we have this year at Kennedy over, or close to 300 students that have the potential to earn college credit in these classes.
Nice.
Pretty cool.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just as far as programing goes, like you had mentioned Career and College Academy, we have this. And then we still have PSEO, we still have AP courses. So how does a student, like not, like how they pick? I'm going to take this Precalculus versus taking AP Calculus and try to take a test, or?
Yeah, so PSEO, students have to get to the college campus. And which is why we like concurrent enrollment classes, because students are in our building, earning that college credit, and they don't have to worry about transportation and getting over to the college campus. And also, the schedule works because it's just our trimester system. You know, there's no trying to figure out their schedule. Students still have the opportunity to take AP classes. But in AP classes, you have to take an exam in the spring and pass that exam with a three, four, or five. With concurrent enrollment, your grade in the class is the grade that goes on your college transcript. There's no big exam, you know, other than there were standards that are required during the class. Typically, our concurrent enrollment classes are regular classes or honors-level classes. AP-level classes are still AP, and they take the AP exam. So like our honors world lit classes combined with AP world history. So the students potentially in that class could earn the college credit from Normandale with the concurrent enrollment, and then take their AP exam in the spring and earn the college credit and the history side of it.
I'm sure glad we have her in our district to help us sort of stuff and handle it so well. Eric, you're fortunate.
Thank you. I know. Thank you, Chris. Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Next, we'll have community services standard income agreement for businesses requesting workplace English as a second language service. And our Director of Finance is here to speak to that.
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved, the school board of independent school district 271 approves a standard income contract that can be used by Metro South Adult Basic Education, MSABE, for contracts with businesses or organizations requesting workplace English as a second language, WESL Services. Be it further resolved that the Adult Education Director, the Executive Director of Community Services, be authorized as cosigners to execute such contracts when the payment due to the district is under $5,000.
Second. Thank you. Would you like to speak a bit, Brad?
This is a, an agreement, just more of a paperwork issue, where community education works with different businesses going out and helping with limited English-speaking employees. It's rather than having small contracts coming back in front of the board all the time, this is just a way through their normal operations that they can enter into those agreements and have it signed off by Tamara and her staff.
Anyone have any questions regarding this? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to report on the closed session that was held on August 24th, 2015. The school board, the superintendent, and members of the cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, August 24th, for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. No school board action was taken or required. Thank you for that. Next, we will have board member reports.
Madam Chair.
Director Berkshire.
So this one, this one's, I'll, I'll try and make it a little different. It's been a little bit longer since we had our last meeting. So many things have happened. I've had a lot of opportunities to go and visit schools. I went to four or five different open houses for intermediate district 917. Was there for the first day of school over at Olson Middle. Was able to wave hi to a lot of the kids when they, when they came to school. Attended a Poplar Bridge PTSA meeting that was, that was very informative. A lot of people there were 23, 23 people there, and one, one brave guy. So had lunch with the second graders over at Normandale Hills Elementary. And that sort of leads me into what I'd like to focus on tonight. I happen to be served by my coworker, Tom Bennett. What I'd like to do is to focus just briefly on the volunteers in the district. Tom was volunteering his time serving lunch. I know that all my coworkers volunteer their time throughout the district. But I'd also like to say thank you to all the, just all the volunteers that make the district what it is. I know that we really couldn't be who we are without our act. I know that we really couldn't be who we are without our active volunteer community. I know all of our PTSA council, all 15 of them, they rely heavily on their volunteers. If you're listening to this, and if you have an extra hour, and you want to become a volunteer, you can contact the superintendent, not the superintendent, sorry, Les, the principals at the, at all 15 of the schools, and ask how you can become a volunteer. If you want to be, if you want to greet people in the morning, just to say hi, to hold the door open, have a smiling, familiar face, takes half an hour. If you want to serve lunch, like Director Bennett, a couple, three hours, and I think you get a lunch on the deal. There's any number of opportunities to become a volunteer within the schools. So please consider becoming a volunteer. We love our volunteers. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Saram.
Yeah, I attended the, we had our first CFAC, Citizens Financial Advisory Committee meeting, last Monday, or last Tuesday, and most of the members were there, and it was really good to get to meet people and remember our purpose, and it was mainly in the advisory sense, and they appreciate that all the time. Rod was there and gave information about the pay levy, pay 2016 levy. We talked a little bit about a fund balance and policy about that, and they're in favor of maintaining our current policy that we approved, I think it was last year in June, of the 5%. One of their, and then we asked for advice on what they had, any ideas or something about that? We talked a little bit about the referendum, but one of their big concerns was when the Mall of America comes online and the tax benefits, if ever, if any. But we want to try and get some information from the city, the county, the state, and everything else about that, so we can take advantage of it. When we talked about right sizing the budget, and how close it was going to be over the next couple of years, the immediate response was, well, let's increase revenue. And of course, I said, how do you do that? And he said, well, you gotta get more kids in the schools. And so we challenged them to go to their various businesses and everything, and find more kids to bring into our district. And a couple of people were talking about the excellent programs that we have, Strive and the Career and College Academy, for our students, and sometimes we spend so much time on preschool and elementary school, we kind of let the high school kids maintain their own or go on with it, or it is. But we really need to re-energize our thrust in serving the high school kids with all of the different programs that we heard about tonight and tomorrow. And they're members of the Chamber of Commerce, too, and so as we were talking, we said, you know, that's something that they really want to try and pursue. So that was it. I also attended a PTA update here at Oak Grove Middle School, gave them an update on what we were doing, all the things we were doing in the school board to help all of our parents and citizens in the district, as well as mentioning the safety improvements that we have in all our schools, and that's the big thing, you know? And they were just, they were all impressed with that, so that was good for them. I do want to mention, on behalf of the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that there is a workshop coming up in October that a couple of us probably should attend as a group just to see how the MSBA is going to be doing that. You know, we do have our model that we want to do, and I'll, we'll try and get a meeting in October, a pre-meeting in October with the Evaluation Committee, and our quarterly emphasis that we are going to use starting in January. So that's just an update. I don't know if anybody wants to commit to it now, but we can do it. And then finally, we have on October 1st, an opportunity to participate in our wonderful Hall of Fame activities that we kind of, as a district sponsor. Traditionally, we've always had maybe a School Board member or somebody provide a greeting at the thing. So Mr. Bianchi called me today, since I won't be able to make it, and he said, it's up to me to find a replacement that might want to offer a greeting or a little invocation or something. So I'm throwing that out to you now, or any members of the public or something like that that want to do that, to give me a call, to make sure that they attend. This is a well-deserved program, and it's been going on for a long time, honoring various people who participated in our athletic activities over the years in many different ways.
That's over at the Knights of Columbus, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's at the Knights of Columbus?
And it's at the Knights of Columbus, October 1st, Thursday night.
Starts at 6:00?
Starts at 6:00. Or before, depending on if you're friends with the school people and want to get there early. Or BAA people, or even the BAA people.
I would come, but I'm otherwise busy that particular evening.
Okay, Dick has an excuse.
Well, the League of Women Voters is holding their candidate forum.
That's right.
So three of us are, need the excuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I bet Tom and Rick would love to go shake hands.
Thank you.
I have two football games.
Don and Tom, could you go?
All right, anyone else have a report?
Okay, I went to the LMC meeting last month, where they had the election of co-chairs, and Mary Burrows was elected to serve the district, and Brad Parker for the unit. So, thank you, Brad and Mary, for volunteering to step up and run that committee again. There's also discussion of the wellness and the Wellness Committee, the committee, and what's working and what changes might need be made. So they're talking about maybe making some changes to it, and having the NOVU group come back and make a presentation to LMC to see if they can help us in that regard. I also went to the AMSD Director's Meeting last month. I am the alternate to the AMSD, and Director Corman is the member, whatever it's called. And we've decided since so far away and so early that we'll kind of split up the meetings, and I was fortunate to go to this one, because Dr. Bill Morris was giving a presentation. And he's with Morris Leatherman Company, which does polling data, and they, he just did one that he called "The Rational Majority on Public Education", which was the metro district area, homes that reside in the metro district area. And there's a bunch of stuff, and I just wanted to share a couple of them. I won't go through the whole thing. If you want a copy of this, I can give you a copy, but one of them was "The Direction in Minnesota", and that's the right track, wrong track message we always hear, and it's usually bad news, but for metro area, it's very good news, where 53% think we're on the right track. And he says that's trending upwards, and it's one of the highest that he's seen since he's been doing this. Another one that I thought was interesting was "The Automatic Renewal of Existing School Referenda", where 56% of the respondents would be in favor of such thing, which would make, you know, our job much easier if we had such a thing. So maybe the Legislative Committee might want to address that, and maybe add that to our platform next year. And another one, of course, is testing, always a hot topic. And while 71% want a high school graduation test, they also want less testing, whereas the plurality of those that responded want us testing every two to three years, at 33%. Three times during their whole educational career, at 32%, and only 17% want us testing them every year, which is kind of what we're doing now. And another thing that wasn't on his presentation, but was answered by a follow-up question. A board member asked if he asked any questions about if people are supportive of the military? And he said he did ask a question if parents would be in favor of ROTC programs in their schools, and 59% said yes, which I thought is kind of odd. You know, I grew up in Albuquerque, went to high school in Albuquerque, and there's like 10, 11 high schools, and every one of them had an ROTC program. I was actually in the Marine Corps ROTC program for two years, and decided I don't want to be in the military, which is good to discover when you're 16, instead of in boot camp, like some of my friends did. But then I moved to Minnesota, where the population's like four or five times as much, and there's like a dozen ROTC programs in the entire state, which I think is kind of odd. So, I don't know if our Bloomington students and families would want something like an ROTC program around here, or that's something we can include into our next, when we're doing polling citywide, because when we're looking for options for kids after high school, and beyond just the traditional four-years college, I don't think we should discount the military. I'm an Army brat myself. My dad made a good career out of being in the Army for 25-some-odd years, so military is a good option for some of our students. So, and Calendar Committee, the meeting will be this Wednesday, and hopefully we'll get through some options and hopefully have a calendar soon.
I just, I had a parent tonight ask about the calendar and who she could send a letter to to say that she didn't like the calendar that we're currently on. I said, well, there is a Calendar Committee.
All complaints should be addressed to the Superintendent. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Don?
Okay, the PTSA Council had a couple different things. They had their leadership meeting, and then they had their regular scheduled meeting that they always have during the day. And at their meeting, they had a presentation on personal growth plans. And through both of these meetings, a question also came up about background checks for volunteers and who's paying for it, and evidently it hasn't been consistent. So I guess right now, maybe the Superintendent, if he has anything to add, he can. But right now, we're looking at it, trying to make sure we follow the statute, et cetera, et cetera, and making sure that we'll be consistent, because evidently some parents said that they were paying for their own and other parents weren't, and so it was brought up there. They, their next meeting will actually be held at the College and Career Academy, so remind everybody to go there, not here. And they have their candidate forum at 7:00 PM, October 5th, so that's coming up next week. The Bloomington-Richfield Community Education Services Advisory Council also met. And there, there was an update on the Early Learning Services. And also, Principal from Washburn, Andrew Wilkins, was, had submitted an application to join the council, and the council approved his membership, so he will now also be a member there. And then the Community Engagement, the Board's Community Engagement Committee, which is Director Bartolata, Director Bertstrom, and myself, and Superintendent Fujitaki, and Rick Kaufman, all met last week. And at that meeting, we mostly reviewed the Heritage Days, the Joint City Council Meetings. We did a little update on our calendar, and then we talked briefly about the upcoming board retreat. Then, I also attended a, well, it was a Department of Ed presentation, but there was a quick update there on the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support statewide. And in that update, I learned that about 30% or almost a third of the students in Minnesota now are in schools that their staff have been to the PBIS training. The interesting thing that I thought was that they also tied, they're seeing a correlation between the schools that reach the Celebration status, when they do, basically based on their testing, I guess Celebration status, making their achievement goals. They're seeing a correlation that the schools that are PBIS schools are also having more schools than the Celebration schools, so I thought that was interesting. And then last week, there was a metro PBIS tour, and Washburn Elementary was selected to be part of the tour. And it was really, I attended the tour, it was great to see, because all of these staff from other schools were going down the hallways, taking pictures of everything on the halls in Washburn, so that they could do it at their schools when they started their PBIS program. And I just wanted to say that Melissa Paulson, who was the lead on that for Washburn, did the presentation, did a wonderful job giving a tour of the school. And so, it was great to have people from across the district, or across the metro there, to visit one of our schools. And I also went early and had a chance to go to a classroom where the teacher was actually going over some of the PBIS expectations for the school, and teaching, you know, how does this look in the classroom? If you're, if we're talking responsibility, what does that look like in this classroom? And what are the things that we do? So I thought it was really nice that I got to see that first, and then I had the whole PBIS tour. So, that concludes it, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something?
Yes, I attended the AMSD Legislative Committee last Friday. And, you know, the conversation right now is pretty much about, of course, the platform for next year, for the next legislative session. And, you know, as we definitely heard, it promises to be a very short session, which means that we will have to start talking about, you know, about our own platform for our school district, for our school board, very early, probably, I would say, either November or December, so that we can hold our forum with our legislators earlier as well, you know, probably January or February, because it's going to be early and it's going to be very short. And so the conversation pretty much seems to be, seems like it's going to be around early childhood education again. And it doesn't seem like it's really going to have a focus for the legislators on education. You know, the session, it's going to be, looks like it's going to be mostly about other things, including, you know, taxes and transportation, but not necessarily around education. So that doesn't seem to be the main topic, which is a little bit concerning. So, just a matter of looking at priorities.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, I did a lot of the same things that everyone else did. I attended my quarterly meetings of Companies to Classrooms and the Education Foundation. I attended the MSBA advocacy tour, which included quite a few of our legislators at that meeting, and they also said, if you're going to have your legislators come to you, have them come early, because the session's going to be 10 weeks long, don't expect them to come during the 10 weeks of the session. I also wanted to mention about the Lunchroom Volunteers, thank you, Director Bergerstrom, for saying that. And we, a lot of us here, attended the Athletic Call of Fames for both high schools. They're wonderful events, and honoring some great alumni from both schools. And that concludes my report.
I have a request for four motions from the School Board. The first, Administration requests a motion to establish meeting dates for the School Board with its Youth Advisory Council. The proposed meeting dates are as follows. October 26th, 2015, with the high school representatives. November 9th, 2015, with middle school representatives. February 8th, 2016, with high school representatives. March 14th, 2016, with middle school representatives. And April 11th, 2016, with high school and middle school representatives. Meetings are to be held at Oak Grove Middle School Media Center from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. May I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to hold our Youth Advisory Committee meetings, 10:26, 11:09, 2:08, 3:14, and 4:11. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that's one.
Thank you. Administration requests a motion to establish a board retreat for Saturday, October 3rd, at 8:00 AM at the Bloomington Visitor and Convention Bureau. Topics will include updates on the vision and curriculum instruction. May I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of our board retreat on Saturday, October 3rd, from 8 till 12, 11?
Yes.
Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None, thank you.
Okay. Our district needs to schedule, as with all districts in the state, an annual public meeting to fulfill its requirements for the world's best workforce legislation. The purpose of the meeting is to review student achievement goals, local assessment outcomes, plans and strategies, and practices for improving curriculum and instruction and cultural competency, and to review district's success in realizing its goals. Therefore, Administration requests a motion to establish the annual public meeting for December 14th, 2015. It will be part of the regularly scheduled meetings of the School Board, which begins at 7:00 PM.
So moved?
Thank you. All in favor of the annual meeting being scheduled for December 14th at 7:00 PM? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None.
Administration requests final motion to cancel the December 28th meeting and study session, because it falls during winter break. Therefore, December 14th will be the only School Board session in December.
So moved? Second.
That was fast. All in favor. I think we need some discussion. Anyone, any, all in favor, excuse me, of canceling the December 28th meeting? Please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? No. Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else to come? Is there anything else to come before this, this evening? Hearing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.